To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, any additions or deletions?
No ma'am.
Okay, we have a couple of, what do you call them?
Motions.
Motions, thank you. Couple of motions here. One is to Commissioner Abraham, I believe you have both of those?
Yes, I do.
Suspend the order of business?
I do. I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended as so far as they are in conflict with the printed agenda for this meeting, otherwise, the rules are to remain in full force and effect.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
I further move that the board go into closed session for discussions of matters pertaining to the following topic: proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS 61.8101C.
Second. Okay, and we're doing it this way because Commissioner Abraham has to leave early, so we need to do the executive session at the beginning rather than at the end. So, we will be coming back and probably we'll have a decision.
Can you me call the row?
Yes.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay.
Wait, did you pick up my papers?
Yeah, I picked up your papers.
I'm working to open stuff.
Oh, my papers. Okay.
Hi.
Never know.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I see people rich.
All right.
Okay.
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 Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, if you'll read the motion.
Well, this is a procedural step that we are taking.
Right.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Finance Director to Pay for the So-Source Purchase for Annual Maintenance of the Wall-to-Wall Murals Located on the City of Paducah's Flood Wall Along Water Street." This ordinance is summarized as follows: that the finance director of the City of Paducah, Kentucky is hereby authorized to pay to Herb Rowe the total amount of $24,800 for annual maintenance of the wall-to-wall murals located on the City of Paducah's flood wall along Water Street.
Seconded.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table that motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
So, we've had a positive new development, and David Denton, if you'd come forward and talk about this?
Mayor, Commissioners, members of the audience, there was a fellow that was once about a time ridden out of town on a rail, and as they were riding him out of town on the rail, someone asked him, said, "How do you like the ride so far?" And he said, "Well, if it wasn't for the honor of the thing, I'd just soon walk." And so, in this particular case, I'm going to try to explain to you what's occurred, and I hope it will be something that will be ultimately pleasant to everybody in the room, but I'm going to, the explanation of it is just a little bit complicated, but not really. What's occurred in this particular situation is that the previous ordinance which had been put on the table was, second was made, and then it was tabled. And so, for all practical purposes, as you all would know from parliamentary law, until it's taken off of the table, it just remains dormant and it goes nowhere. Now, the new development that caused this to take place was this afternoon, the city manager received a proposal from Mr. Dafford. Robert Dafford said that he would come to Paducah, and he would do the restoration work on the murals, the three murals that were the subject of it, and that he would charge $5,000 less than what Mr. Rowe was proposing. So, that puts that amount at below $20,000. It puts it very close to the other proposal that was on the table, and it's $5,000 left than what Mr. Rowe's was. Now, an very important thing to remember in this case is the law. In this particular instance, Mr. Dafford is a creator. He is a person who originated the design. He originated the art. It's his, for all practical purposes as we are discussing here tonight. And the law gives a preference to the creating artist. It allows the creating artist to take care of his or her work. So, in this particular instance, we have Mr. Dafford coming to town. He's coming to town with a lower proposal than what Mr. Rowe had. That difference is being paid, I understand, by a patron of his, but that's neither here nor there for us, because we're talking about the city's money. And he's going to be working on the work and doing restoration and conservation work on the matters that he himself created. So, I believe common sense says, and also the law says, that Mr. Dafford's proposal would be favored in court or any other place. He would have been entitled to his own restoration. And quite frankly, I'm personally speaking, I think he does great work. It's nice to see him back in town. And I think perhaps if there hadn't been some discussion, he might not have come down, but he is indeed coming down. More details about when he would arrive and what he would do, you know, you can get from the city manager later. Now, one of the things that I think the Commission will talk to you a little bit about, though, is that we don't want this happening again. We want to get in place a procedure where we understand how the flood wall murals are to be maintained. We want it to be according to the law, and we want everyone that is qualified to understand what the procedure is, and that there be a fair and unbiased procedure for deciding how we're going to go and how we decide it in the future. Now, I'm not smart enough to tell you, riding on a rail or not, about how we're going to do that tonight, but I do know the Commission is interested in finding a way on that. I suspect they will charge the city manager to do something along those lines. So, that's essentially where we are, except for one more motion. The city manager has, under our procurement laws at the City of Paducah, the right to spend up to $20,000 on his own. I suspect we will not do that by motion tonight, but you ought to know, and the Commission may want to discuss it with you, they will tell the city manager to go ahead and spend up to $19,800, which is within his limit, with Mr. Dafford, to get Mr. Dafford come down to fulfill his proposal, which is what I just described. So, I hope that wasn't too convoluted, and I hope it wasn't too confusing, but the bottom line is, is that the new proposal has come in from the creating artists. It's within the limit that the city manager can spend, which is up to $20,000, and the city commission is prepared to accept that proposal because of Mr. Dafford's presence and preference as the creator. So, Mayor, I hope that helped a little bit, and Members of the Commission, I hope that, I think the solution turns out at this moment to be a good one, because it complies with the law, and I think it also complies with what most everybody in this room would like to see happen, and that is that there is preference given to the creating artist, and that their rights under VARA and their rights under similar laws that may be enacted are respected. And that's exactly what the city commission worked to get done, and that's what they have got done, and I salute them for the great job they've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I talked with Mr. Dafford today, and he said, "I will, I will come to Paducah and work on the murals, work on my murals." And I said, "Robert, that would be really great if you would make that trip and do this work yourself." So, he said he'd have to juggle his schedule a little bit, but he would make a point to be here in Paducah to do his own maintenance. And, you know, I think that's important, that he is here and that he doesn't have a designee that's doing the work. And we can go on, next year, the city manager will work on this, and see how we proceed in the future. So, I appreciate everyone's passion for this. You know, we've had a lot of input from different people within the community, and that's also important, that we hear how people feel. Does any of the other Commissioners have anything to say today?
I think that addresses the main concern of the artists that I talked to, that as long as the original artist is doing his or her restoration, then that's what needs to happen. And I think we've, we've made sure with this new development that that's going to happen. So, and just to follow what David said, our city attorney, is that we need a process moving forward on how to handle our murals. And the city manager's been charged with that task, and I'm sure he's up to it.
I guess I would say that we're a nation of laws, and for me, that's, that's important. I want to do what the law says and to do it correctly. So, we'll move forward, as far as I'm concerned.
Andrew, you okay?
There's been a lot of passion expressed on this issue, and I would say let's put that forward in a positive way and move forward from here.
And Pam, the next meeting of the arts group that I have pulled together is July the 3rd, and I would welcome any of you all that are here today, because what we really do in that arts group, it's, we don't have a main focus. We just talk about what we can do to make Paducah better with the arts, how we can bring all of the groups together. We have Papa's that meets with us, we have Yaizer, we have representatives from all different groups. So, if you all have not been to those meetings, you're welcome to come, and that's at 1:30 on July the 3rd in the training room downstairs. And I would like to have some of you all there, because I've got an interesting idea I wanted to run by you for some other project that we could do here in Paducah. I'd like to get your input on that. Do we do this now?
I think you will.
Do any, any that filled out the sheets, would you like to come and speak? All right. Well, there's two of you, okay.
Need their name.
And we need your name.
My name is Lady Van Tiger. Hello, everybody. I think that this discussion has brought forward, as you all mentioned, some passions that can be put forward in a positive way, and maybe at this meeting, we can discuss some very specific ideas that could help some of the local artists feel more support from the city, and feel that their missions with their work is being helped and be moved forward. One of the things that I put forth in my statement, that all of you have a copy of, and all of you can access online at ladyvantiger.wix.com/theheartdoesknow, you can access my presentation in a complete form, but one of the, one of the suggestions that I had was that maybe a volunteer or a paid part-time person could actually be a liaison that would work between artists and potential patrons. And in this capacity of being a liaison for the artist community and the individual artists, they could actually seek out grants and other types of funding that would actually produce some public art projects that local artists could be a part of. I don't think that any of our local artists set out with their, creating their businesses with the mission to repair other people's artwork. They all have unique, wonderful voices, and they're all so gifted. Most of these artists have worked long and hard to develop their skill levels, and they're quite competent. And so, if we could create some sort of public works that would be supportive of these artists and their true voices as artists, that would be a very positive thing to move forward with this passion that's been generated by this issue.
And I didn't even tell her what my idea was.
End the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Larry Ellegood from Paducah.
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask the Commission and the mayor and the city manager, on the Marina project?
Is that what you wanted to speak on?
Yes.
Well, that would be later with our public comments. I'm sorry, we're just talking about the art right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Please come back up.
I will.
Anyone else that wants to speak? Jeff?
Jeff Spicer, local artist. I was one of those passionate people that kind of started the petition, and I'd just like to say that we all, I think every artist I talked to in the community over the past couple of weeks, I think would agree with your decision, that we all respect an artist's right to redo their own work, and if Robert's coming up here to do the work, we're very happy to see that development. Moving forward, I think this has brought up a lot of discussion, a lot of passion that can be harnessed and channeled and put in the right direction, and I've learned a lot myself. I think a lot of artists in our community has learned a lot about Vera rights and copyright and things that we should have known for 30-something years, but myself, but really didn't dig into, and has forced us to learn a lot of stuff that we should already know. So, I'm already scheduled to make a couple of meetings and talk about those things to some of my other fellow artists. Look what we learned, and I think that's a positive development, so.
Well, please come to that meeting on the 3rd, and we can-
I'll be there.
-talk about that, too.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Evita Cole, and I'm from Paducah. I just wanted to address all the other artists that are here, because I don't think many of them knew that Herb Rowe hired me last summer and gave me an incredible opportunity that most young artists in this community don't have, which was to learn from him and to earn some money that would pay for my education. I am a student at the Paducah School of Art and Design, and this was a big issue for me, because I was going to get that position back again this summer, and like I said, there's not really a lot of opportunities in Paducah for young artists to really create their first stepping stone, so their future careers as working artists. Of course, Jeff Spicer has changed that for, for a lot of us with the Olive Cart, but this was going to be a major, you know, I, just from working with him last summer, I got some other job offers. I painted a mural at the Challenger Learning Center up at the main campus because of it. So, it was going to be a really profound opportunity again for me to be able to continue working with him. So, he did care about the local community, and he was investing in it by paying me to be his apprentice, and I just wanted them to know that he actually does care about this community, and he reached out to me as, you know, knowing that I was a student and an art student, to give me that opportunity. So, I just wanted them to realize that he does care about this community. Herb Rowe has been working on those murals since he was 19-years-old, and he is very invested in the work and passionate about it. So, I just wanted to clarify that he was making investment into the community by hiring me, and I would have loved to have that opportunity again, and I'm sad to say that now I won't have that opportunity. So, whatever ideas that you have, I hope that I would be welcome at that meeting, because I'm very passionate about helping the Paducah School of Art and Design evolve and create more realistic opportunities for the many talented artists that are there, and I hope to be one of those people that gets supported in the community.
Thank you. Thank each of you all for coming tonight, and I look forward to talking with you more about what we can do to make art even more prominent in Paducah. Okay, we have, on the agenda? No. Need your agenda.
Your agenda? Would you like my?
Okay, we don't have any minutes tonight, right?
Correct.
So, we'll go on to appointments, and... Who has the first one?
You do.
Oh, I do. I read this, and then they read it. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Tracy Jones. Tracy Jones is a member of the Board of Adjustments to replace Joseph Benberry, who has resigned. This term will expire August 31st, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Tracy Jones as a member of the Board of Adjustments.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham? Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Do you want to say anything, Tracy? I think Tracy's going to be a great board member on the Board of Adjustment. We're so happy to have you.
Thank you, and I just want to say thanks to Steve Irving for allowing me the opportunity, and as well, you all. I appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you publicly.
Thank you. Thank you for serving.
All right.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint, reappoint Shirley Lanier as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Senior Citizens Board. This term will expire June 30th, 2016.
Okay. I move the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler reappointing Shirley Lanier as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Senior Citizens Board.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
On to our motions. Commissioner Wilson, I move that the following documents be received and filed: certificates of insurance, Brookshire Concrete Construction, Lee &amp; Associates, BH Green &amp; Sons, Inc., Metzger Construction, Bobby's Plumbing, Inc., Municipal Equipment, Inc., AST Environmental, Inc., Asphalt Paving, Inc., and Murco, Inc., right-of-way bond from Harper Construction, LLC, contracts and agreements for probation and parole for 400 South Sixth Street, memorandum and agreement between the Commonwealth Office of Technologies Division of Geographic Information for geographic information system data and aerial photography updates, ordinance number 201318010, contract for services for Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau, ordinance 2013, I guess, 58037, change order number one for the preservation and renovation of the Market House and River Discovery Center, ordinance number 201358036, deeds for 833 South Fifth Street to Julian Rose, MO number 1704, 1209 Bell Avenue to Glenda Sharp, MO number 1705, deed of conveyance and permanent public utility easement to the city from Gary and Joe Spear for the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project, ordinance number 201358033, Commissioners' deed for 1126 Park Avenue, Commissioners' deed for 2820 Bradley Street, documents for closing of a portion of South Fourth Street, AKA as Meyer Street, at Wayne Sullivan Drive, and a portion of Woodward Street, ordinance number 201348031, recorded ordinance, recorded plat, quitclaim deed to Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority, quitclaim deed to Paducah &amp; Louisville Railway, Inc., City of Paducah City Commission meeting cancellation notices for May 21 and June 21, 2013, City of Paducah, Kentucky, 2013 National Citizen Survey Benchmark Report and reported demographic subgroup comparisons performed by the National Research Center, Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for months ended April and May 2013, City of Paducah Financial Reports for periods ending December 31, 2012, March 31, 2013, and April 30, 2013, Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority Operating Budget for 2013, 2014.
Seconded.
City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Carol, are you going, are you doing Richard's?
I am.
Okay, Commissioner Galt?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Hi, Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission.
Second, sorry, second.
Good evening. We have for your consideration on personnel actions, in addition to the normal actions during the week, some movement in the Parks Department. I would like to point out the retirement of Jan Saxon after 23 and 1/2 years of service. She is going to be dearly missed in the Police Department. The balance of personnel actions, it's time as we enter the new fiscal year for annual wage adjustments. The balance of the personnel actions for your consideration are the specific recommendations left over from Dr. Victoria McGrath's compensation study. She said some of our employees were behind market enough that we needed to carry over an increase a couple of years in a row. The balance of these are her specific recommendations on how to do that. The three that are not specific from her, however, they were mentioned in her report, were the compression issues mentioned in fire for the Assistant Chiefs level. Those, she gave us her theory of compensation, told us there was an issue, and Chief Kyle and I worked through that with, with the city manager on a good step increase in keeping with her theory.
Let me just expound on the first point Cindy made about the second year of multi-year implementation of adjustments in a few instances. While Cindy's correct that Victoria said, in her opinion, it works to do it over a couple of years, that was really driven by budgetary considerations more than anything else, to allow the city the capability to budget for it over, over a couple of years and sort of phase into it, rather than have to deal with, with the full amount of the recommendation that abruptly.
All right. Any questions? City clerk? Thank you, Cindy.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
A move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting the fiscal year 2013-2014 pay grade schedule for the employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
Okay, this item is the pay grade schedule. We have found that this has worked well for us in the last year. We have not had to make any changes to this since we introduced it this time last year for your approval. This year, we've made a few changes. In keeping it fresh with market, it was Dr. McGrath's recommendation that while we were able to do 1 and 1/2 to 2 and 1/2 percent annual wage adjustments, the recommendation to keep the pay grade schedule current with market and keep it alive and fresh as long as possible was to do a 1 percent increase to the pay grade schedule. So, what you see before you is a new pay grade schedule with 1 percent increase on all quartiles. Other than that, we made a few changes. As we already discussed, the Assistant Chiefs and the Fire Department, we moved that, those step pay increases, we moved their pay grade from a P to a Q, and we corrected one issue that we noticed in the GIS specialist. It was in the right pay grade, but we noticed a number that was incorrect there. And then, other than that, just a minor title changes in the EPW group for some alignment there.
Any questions? All right.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay, I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting the 2013-2014 position and pay schedule for full-time employees- position and pay schedule for full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second.
Okay, the final of the trifecta here tonight is the position and pay schedule that you have before you. What this document now does aligns with the previous two documents that you've already approved. And like I mentioned, it also shows you the 1 and 1/2 to 2 and 1/2 percent pay increases for annual wage adjustments. In addition to that, we've aligned those minor EPW title changes among the superintendents there. We moved a few things around for ease of use for some of the directors. And then, aside from that, we've removed, we've had a few positions that are vacated that we're recommending for removal, including the Assistant City Clerk position, the Network Technician position in the IT Department, the Events and Promotion Specialist in PRA. And then, finally, let's see. Your fire and police step increases, and this document shows you the detailed nine-step addition that we did for the Assistant Chief progression.
Any questions? Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We're going on to ordinances adoption. Commissioner Galt?
Actually...
Oh, sorry.
You skipped one.
Sorry. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary for a 2013 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $65,000 for the Paducah Police Department's Handheld Radio Replacement Project be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. So that is, that's still under municipal orders. I was getting ahead of myself. Chief Berry, how are you?
Pretty good, the mayor, commissioners, city manager. Just continuing process. Some of the police radios are over 20 years old, so we've been trying to upgrade. This is money that's no match, so we're going after $65,000 from the Homeland Security folks.
You feel good?
I feel very good about it.
Good. All right. Any questions for the chief? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a 2013-2014 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program reimbursement grant award with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety, a division of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, for a 2013-2014 Kentucky Governor's Highway Safety Program grant award in the amount of $40,500 for overtime hours attendance to a state-sponsored conference and purchase of equipment. This grant does not require any local cash or income match.
All right, we've discussed these before. Does anyone?
I need a second.
Second.
We miss Richard, don't we?
We do.
All right, City Clerk, you want to call the row?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, or Galt again.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of gem steel construction for construction of a new home at 1330 Madison Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah approves the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of gem steel construction in the amount of $134,750 for the construction of a new home at 1330 Madison Street as part of the 2012 Home Project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. All right, need anything? Any comments? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. Another long one here.
Uh huh.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Adopting the City of Paducah Annual Budget for Fiscal Year July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government of $65,292,500, and is summarized as follows. General, $31,176,330. MAP, $1,121,000. Investment, $5,407,680. CDBG, $1,364. Home, $500,000. Emergency 9/11, $1,688,600. Court awards, $25,200. Debt, $3,354,925. CIP, $7,751,680. Solid waste, $4,878,770. Civic rental, $78,025. Rental, $159,430. Radio depreciation, $143,275. Fleet, $534,130. Fleet trust, $979,85. Self-insurance, $991,905. Health insurance, $3,559,400. And pension funds. I won't go into the acronyms. $1,579,065 unless, Tammy, I have to say AEPF, PFFP, and TRSTS, AKA pension funds, for a grand total of $65,292,500.
Second.
Phew, a lot of money.
All right. Any discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go on to ordinances for introduction, and we do not vote on.
We have one more adoption.
I do?
Uh huh. Contract for the consultant.
All right, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a contract with Westlake, Reed, and Liskowski to complete a concept study for the Columbia Theater and authorizing the execution of said contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby approves the concept study contract between the City of Paducah and Westlake, Reed, and Liskowski for the Columbia Theater in the lump sum amount of $30,000 and up to $3,000 for reimbursable expenses, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. Okay, any discussion on this? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zone change for the property located at 5178-5184 and 5186 Hinkleville Road, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Rezone property located at 5178-5184 and 5186 Hinkleville Road from R1 Low Density Residential Zone and MU Mixed Use Zone to HBD Highway Business District, and amend the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning.
Second. Steve?
Yes, if I could, can I give about a three-minute presentation on this? First of all, this rezoning was staff-initiated, meaning the planning department actually called the property owners. There's three different property owners, Concord United Methodist Church, Olivet Baptist, and Concord Elementary School. In total, we're talking about 30 acres on the south side of US 60. All three property owners have actually signed the zone change map. The proposal is to change it from R1, which is our low-density residential zone, to mixed use, and mixed use to HBD, which is the adjacent zone. What this does is it allows the churches and the school to avoid the sometimes lengthy process known as a conditional use permit for them to get just basic approvals to do things, whether it be a new parking lot, a new sign, or even addition to their existing building. As a use by right, they'll just be able to submit their plans to the Inspection Division, I'm sorry, Fire Prevention Division, and be able to get the permits necessary to move forward. This is just showing the zone change map, which I know you have, but for the audience at home, as you see, it's on the south side of US 60. That's the 30 acres outlined in the yellow. The existing land use map, the yellow arrow is pointing to Concord Elementary. Directly to the west or the left-hand side is Olivet Baptist, to the right is Concord Elementary. Of course, north of there is Coles, and Kentucky Oaks Mall is to the northeast. The future land use map, Caris 100 requires, before there's actually a zone change, that the zone change being compliance with the future land use plan, or that there be major physical, economic, or social changes that weren't anticipated. In this instance, the future land use plan of the comp plan shows all that area as being Just showing the large retail surrounding the proposed zoning. The R1 zone that it is right now allows the single-family homes, duplexes, and community centers. The MU zone, or the HBD zone that's proposed, allows a variety of commercial land uses. There's a lot of new commercial that's happened within the area, and then here shortly, the loss of Wellspring Dermatology is going to be breaking ground, a new Taco John's and a Finish Line Car Wash will be in the area. Last slide just talks about the Caris 100 requirements. As far as notification, before any zone change happens, we're required to notify everyone within 200 feet, put a notification in the newspaper, and also put signs on the property. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on June 17th. They heard input from citizens and made a positive recommendation to the City Commission. And that is it, unless you all have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 18 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance summarizes as follows. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to delete all references to the National Electric Code, International Basic Energy Conservation Code, and International Basic Mechanical Code. Further, the amendments bring the city's ordinance into compliance with the 2007 Kentucky Building Code.
Second. Les, do you want to come up and talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, the proposed changes really don't change any of the format that was adjusted last year by the commission. This is a, just a legal clarification based on an audit by the state offices to put us into line with the Kentucky Building Code.
So there's really nothing new?
Nothing changed except just some legal descriptions. The state did ask us to remove a electrical ordinance revision to a conduit ordinance, which was deleted, but otherwise, it was just a descriptive ordinance change.
Are the fee schedules, is it sent by the same? Is it changed on page? Page four?
We looked at that, but to my knowledge, there was no change in the fee schedule.
Okay. One of the, and this is maybe sort of on the subject, but maybe not. Is there any movement by the state to talk about fire sprinkler systems in private dwellings? Tell me that's just an ugly rumor.
At the state level?
Well, where there's conversations, or is there some conversation somewhere? I hear that buzz.
Actually, at a national level, there is a trend to have implemented in the national codes, a residential sprinkler system in all single-family dwellings and up, but that has not seen any interest at the state level. And matter of fact, it came up in the last national conference and passed into the residential code, but most of the states and ordinance and local jurisdictions have deleted that out of their adoptions.
Well, thank you. Just asking a question.
Well, and that would keep the Fire Department out of a job, too.
Well, we can't do, they're already trying to put themselves out of a fire job. Okay, thank you.
All right.
No, no.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay for emergency remediation due to partial roof collapse for property located at 318-324 Broadway. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Finance Director of the City of Paducah is hereby authorized to pay Jones excavation the sum of $21,000 for emergency remediation due to the partial roof collapse for property located at 318-324 Broadway.
Need a second.
A second, I'm sorry.
All right, any discussion? All right. Down to City Manager's report.
There were six properties that we initiated foreclosures on that sold at public auction yesterday, including the former motel and residential care facility on Irvin Cobb Drive. Along with that sale, went an obligation for demolition, and our expectation is that the buyer will proceed with that. That sale did net $10,000. That is enough money that we will realize some resources backed off that, some of the costs that we had invested in property maintenance. So that's a good thing. In addition to that, two of the other properties that sold as a result of our foreclosure initiatives also will be torn down directly by the new owners. So that's progress. We will need to have business items on our agenda for next Tuesday night. The Sheehan Bridge Road sale activity subsequent to that auction that included a replating are now, or close to being completed, and that property will be ready for formal action by the commission beginning next Tuesday. And I think it will be required that you meet the following Tuesday so that that's completed within the time period specified by state law. Also, hopefully next week, you will have before you a contract for construction on the new building associated with telecom. Also, the week of the 9th and 10th could be a very busy week and might make a meeting a little bit problematic. Myself, John Perkins, and Rick Murphy will be going to Washington on the 8th for a two-day innovation conference, and there's some prospect, as came out last night, of a meeting in Washington that week with government officials. So we'll just have to see how that develops and make that call on a meeting that week. I suppose there's some possibility that if we have to meet before the end of June to get the second reading on the Sheehan Bridge Road property, that it may not be able to be on our normal Tuesday night, may have to be another day before the end of the month.
Okay, I would...
Not before the end of the month, before the end of the 30-day time period, I meant to say.
If we read it on the 3rd, then you have to do two weeks, have the second reading.
Yeah, that's, how does that work? Isn't that the way we discussed it?
If you read it on the 2nd, then our next regular meeting will be the 9th. But according to law, you can have a called meeting within, in the next 24 hours.
Yeah, so we'll see how many, you know, how many people may not be here for the 9th.
On the 9th.
You may have to make a call to have the meeting sooner than that, I guess.
Right.
What you're saying, sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Because the 9th is, in fact, the last. Because the 9th is, in fact, the last day that that second reading could take.
Yes, because they're closing on the-
Correct. All righty, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well, you know, we've had a really great day today in Paducah. We had the Whitehall groundbreaking, and, you know, it's great to have that manufacturing facility here in Paducah, and they'll be offering 150 jobs, and they'll be good-paying jobs with good benefits. That should be under roof, and they'll be ready to move in by December. Had a reception for Whitehall and at the Cyber Cafe at the Emerging Technology Center, and the young man that does the catering for the Cyber Cafe also has a part in Les Mis. So not only is he, can he sing beautifully, but he is a divine cook as well. We met with the governor after the Whitehall groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting for Jackson Purchase Rural Electric Cooperative for their new substation, and talked with the governor about his trip to Washington on July 8 concerning USEC and some of the issues that we want to present to the Senators and Congressman Whitfield and the Secretary of Energy. We will be going as a group July 10 to also talk with many of those same members, and we're all speaking with one voice, that we want monies for cleanup for the plant, and that we want land reuse, and we want the ability to attract another, a large company out there for jobs. Anything else, Jeff, that?
On that, I think that's-
We had a joint meeting last night with the county. I thought that went pretty well. Thought we got really good report on it with the TV station. Does anyone have anything to say about the meeting?
We did vote to pass a resolution from the city and the county, the union-
Right.
-of Economic Development in the chamber in support of the initiatives that you just mentioned.
Right, and we were working, we voted to work on the wording for the resolution, and then we will pass that once it's put together as a city, and then the county will vote separately on that.
Right.
So a lot going on in Paducah. Everyone's working really hard to keep those, keep the jobs going out at the plant. I know we won't have them as they have been in the past, but especially for the cleanup out there, it's very important that we, even if you all want to send a letter, an email, it's important that our legislators hear our voices and what we want for this community. So I would encourage you to do that.
What else I'd like to just say, if you want to see a beautifully restored renovated building in Paducah, the old freight house on South, 300 South Third Street, there is an open house on Thursday from 4 to 6. It shows what can be done.
And it is beautiful. Everybody needs, and it has art-
It does have some of the private collection from the Yiser Art Center is on display there. Free food, entertainment, Josh Coffey-
That'll get 'em there.
-playing, so please come, lot of food.
Carol, do you have anything?
I don't think that I do. I'm good.
All right. Any public comments? We're adjourned.
Are we having an executive session tonight?
We already, already had that, haven't we?
Okay, we're done, okay.
We've already had that.
Oh, I thought-
We're adjourned.
I thought it was here.